Mary, how are you? Is everybody here?
I don't want to complain. Nobody wants to hear that anyway, so.
No.
I won't complain.
What did Lou Holtz say?
Doesn't.
Don't tell people your problems. Eighty percent don't care and twenty percent are glad you have them.
Yeah, right. So true.
That was good.
Absolutely true.
Before we start the meeting, I have something to say. First of all, when the meeting starts and you have not signed up, you may not be allowed to speak. You have to sign up to speak with your name and address. Second of all, I would like to address the community and the board and say that we all should act very professional. I think some of us on both sides have not, so I would appreciate that we all act professionally. Also, if not, we can adjourn this meeting. So I just want to say that. And I also would like to read our policy on public comment. Says the Little Miami Local School Board of Education encourages and welcomes communication from the residents of our community. Any individual who wants to address the board during a meeting must sign in prior to the meeting with the attending school official or on our list. Comments should not involve personal issues that are limited to three minutes per thirty minutes total. Speakers will be recognized by the word president and must state his or her name and address. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, or irrelevant. An adjournment of the meeting can be called if there is a lack of orderly conduct. So I just wanted to say that and set the rules before we start. So I would like to call it an order. This is what? April meeting of the Little Miami School District on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Oh, twenty-five. Sorry. All right. I need a roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace?
Here.
Mrs. Horvath?
Here.
Mrs. Elmer?
Here.
Mr. Seibert?
Here.
Mr. Wallace?
Here.
Please join our ROTC, Junior ROTC, and the board in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Each month, the Board of Education is proud to recognize individuals who exemplify what it means to demonstrate leadership, good character while making a difference at Little Miami. They're perfect examples of what it means to be a Panther bride. This month, we want to recognize our military family children. April is the month of military child, and we're excited to honor the incredible strength, resilience, and sacrifices of our military-connected students with parents or guardians serving in the armed forces. This year, we have one hundred and fifty-three military children enrolled at Little Miami. These children face unique challenges like frequent moves, long deployments, and the emotional toil of having a loved one in harm's way, and they do so with bravery and grace. Throughout the month, we recognize these students and their families through special events, student spotlights, and our Purple Up Day, which is today. We wear purple in support of our military children. We have a short video to show some of our families who shared pictures with us. Before that, I want to let everyone know that Little Miami does have a Purple Star designation, which means we are committed and best equipped to meet the unique needs of individual military children. The Purple Star program was designed to help mitigate the challenges of high mobility by setting standards for publicly designated military-friendly schools. The Purple Star designation is a three-year designation. In April twenty twenty-three, the Ohio Department of Education renewed all Little Miami school buildings as Purple Star award-winning schools. So let's look at our video. I can't imagine what it would be like to have to move every so often and go into strange schools and strange places. So we applaud these children for doing the best that they can do. All right. Now we would like to continue with our Panther Character Award.
Good evening. Brad, great job on that video. So really impressive how many military families we do have in this area. Pretty neat. Panther Character Award, we'd like to recognize five deserving students as this month's Panther Character Award winners. This honor is presented to one student from each of our schools. The students are recognized by their teachers and peers for their hard work and good character. This month's character trait is hope. We would ask that the following students come up here and line up in front of the board facing the audience. Madison Glover. Merida Theskin. Camden Fox. Wallace Brown. And Emma Vilkesley. And I know. And I know Emma couldn't be here tonight as she's trying out for the seventh-grade cheer squad. And tonight's the first night of the clinic, so good luck to Emma. I want to read a brief note about each student. First is Madison. Madison is a bright and shining light. She always has a smile on her face and has a positive attitude. She sees good in all situations and asks questions to better understand why. So good job. Merida Theskin. Merida has hope for a better world and everything that life throws at her. She turns it around into a good thing. It is really inspiring. One time she showed hope is when my brother went to the hospital and she made it for the family to have hope for him to get better soon. I'm really thankful for her. Without Merida's help, I would have been really sad. So great job. Camden Fox. Cam shows unwavering dedication to his education and teammates in the face of personal adversity. His quiet strength, daily perseverance, and selfless support of others are a true testament to his outstanding character. And Wallace Brown. Wallace greets every day with a smile. He always gives his best effort and has a positive attitude no matter the situation. Although grades are very important here, we're very proud of our grades. We're also very proud of these young students and the character that they show. Congratulations.
All right. We want to congratulate all of you for your achievements and continued efforts to make the experience here at Little Miami great. We'd like for all of our award winners to head to the lobby for pictures. Thank you. He always changes it, yeah. I know. She is so cute. All right. Each board meeting, we read our mission statement. The Little Miami School Board of Education encourages and welcomes communication from residents of our community. Any individual that wants to address the board during a meeting must sign in prior to the meeting with the attending school officer. That's not what I want. Where's my mission? Okay, thanks. The board believes that it is the responsibility of the school system to ensure that each graduate is college and career-ready. To these ends, an environment of high expectations and opportunity shall be created that fosters scholarship and citizenship and develops within each student the ability to become a productive and responsible member of the society. If I keep reading this long enough, maybe I can memorize. All right. I need a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Seibert and Mr. Wallace. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the reading of the minutes.
I'll move. Second.
Horvath? And Mrs. Elmer. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes. Moving on, communications and visitors, the board superintendent's comments.
Yes, I would like to congratulate our treasurer's office and Terry Gonda for another clean audit. Terry, how many years has this been?
It's the thirteenth in a row.
So that is amazing. Thank you, Terry.
Entire career. Thank you.
Next, I invite Mark Sousa to the podium. He is the chairman of our Business Advisory Council. He's going to give us an update.
Mark Sousa, fourteen seventy, Shawnee Run Drive. Make sure I follow Bobby's instructions and get that right for the record. Came and spoke to you guys, I think, in the fall. The Business Advisory Council has met twice since then and just given Regina's request some updates on a couple items that we've discussed in our most recent meeting. Talked about fees last fall. Working on that. Haven't made a ton of progress. I assume the fees from the schools, and we started with the list of Warren County. I assume the fees would be readily available in a student handbook or something like that. Found about two or three in the county and not the others. Going to get a list of what we're missing, or Regina, she's going to send a request to those districts. We'll finish compiling those and getting them to you guys. But the format we have, most of the districts have a fee at like the intermediate level, elementary, middle school, high school, general fee generally, maybe a tech fee at the middle school and high school level, and then some subject matter or course-specific fees like at the high school level and testing fees is what we're working on compiling. Would hope to get that to you guys probably over one of your summer meetings. Another item we discussed most recent meeting is an item of pickup. Anyone in the audience, quickly, I guess the way I would describe pickup. District hires an administrative employee or an administrator, let's say a principal or vice-principal. They have a salary, of course. The district makes a contribution to their retirement plan and the employee can. Pickup is when individual doesn't pay their portion and it is hence picked up by the district. Regina said there'd been some conversation on the board looking into this, was interested in trying to find out a little bit more. Our thought was really, in earnest, is just to try to do a basic compensation study of some peer districts for their administrator positions. Maybe have you guys or Regina put together to find maybe half a dozen or so local districts that you think are generally comps to Little Miami from a demographic, you know, income standpoint, things like that. We'd make a records request or research request to get their administrative folks and the pays and who's getting pick up. But really, I think at the end of the day, it just boils down that are you paying in the middle? Are you paying more than average, less than average? Obviously, you start to struggle to attract and retain quality folks if you're not competitive in those pays. There is some information on the district profile report that's out there, the State Department of Education, that lists like administrator ratios and average pays. But it's really hard to define, you know, the peers in that and how close they are to you in proximity and things of that nature. And I think that's probably the important thing at the end of the day, is you have to be competitive to attract and retain those people, as stated. But, you know, you don't want to overpay. We did discuss, there's a really nominal small cost savings in the pickup portion versus those folks being paid that in salary. There's one small payroll withholding tax to Medicare contribution an individual has to make that you save, but it's like about one and a half percent approximately. It's like one point four or five percent. It may add up to a few thousand dollars or several thousand dollars over your pool of people that you do pick up not paying salary, but it's not a significant number. The other item Regina wanted me to make comment on is it's coming to the time in the cycle of the emergency levy. We would start to, historically, the district would consider putting it on the ballot for renewal. Quick synopsis, the emergency issue passed fall of twenty eleven, took the district out of fiscal emergency, repaid, I think it was approximately eleven or twelve million dollars to the state over a couple-year period and returned services. Renewed in fifteen, just as a straight five-year renewal, passed on the first try, I believe. Twenty twenty, the board decided to try to make that a continuing permanent issue. Timing was unfortunate. It was in the spring of twenty twenty. It was during the onset of the pandemic. Election was initially delayed. You had some economic uncertainty. There was some commentary about, you know, why does the school need to retain these funds in perpetuity? We all know that unless the funding model for schools changes, you know, significantly, those funds will be needed in perpetuity. But generally, the district has sought to renew that in the fourth year, in the November election, just so you have more opportunities if you do fail. If you wait till next year and you were to fail in both attempts, you would lose funding for a year even if you had it back on the ballot and pass. So historically, it's been sought in year four of the five-year term, and that's where we're at this year. Some quick math, the ten point six million dollars of the emergency issues, about seventeen percent of the district's current operating budget are roughly sixty million dollars, give or take. Interesting fact, with the rapid growth of the district in appreciation in home values since twenty eleven, the issue passed at thirteen point nine five mils and has collected this year, Terry and Regina tell me it's down to five point nine. So it's less than half. More people sharing the expense and home value is going up, so the mileage comes down. And you guys are all aware, but the audience may not be. That issue raises the same amount of revenue today that it did when it passed and it will in perpetuity unless it's replaced by another ballot issue. That is all I have. I did fail our last BAC meeting to invite anyone other than Bobby, so I will be better at our next BAC meeting. I still want to, we'd hope to see some of the other board members rotate in and out of our meetings that we have quarterly. Anybody have any questions?
I would like to say that I will be in a meeting with all the superintendents, I think in June, so I can also ask them to send us the information on both the pickup and fees.
We can share that with folks and we'll state that when we request it. Hey, we'll share this with you so they have it as a little bit of an incentive to provide that information to us. Anybody else anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mark. That is all I have.
Thank you, Regina. Community comments on agenda items. Anyone signed up? All right, thank you. Treasurer's reports and financial reports.
Yes. Under item D, number one, I'd like to ask for the board's approval of the monthly financial reports.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Seibert?
I'll second.
Elmer? Discussion?
Included is, of course, this is for month ending March twenty twenty-five. We have a bank reconciliation, also our cash summary of all individual funds within the district, two different budgetary reports for the general fund and also a revenue report for the general fund.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to ask for the board's approval of all the contracts, excuse me, as listed.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Seibert and Mr. Wallace? Discussion. It was Mr. Seibert and Mr. Wallace.
Yeah, we have a list of various contracts, actually, this month. We have, the first one's with Applied Behavioral. That is for twenty-one oh four monthly. That is for a student aide for special education services. We have the next contract with Aubrey. That is a data solutions collection software. That is for next school year for twenty-five, twenty-six at thirty-two, seven, sixty. The next one we have actually is Ray St. Clair Roofing, and this is fantastic, I got to tell you. The cost is zero. The value of the roof, they're going to put a new roof on the concession stand, which got blown to bits a little bit from some of the weather we've had, and also the two ticket booths. So they're going to re-roof all three of those, a value of about thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. They're actually going to do that as a trading kind, I guess you'd say, and for some advertising services. So I think that is fantastic that they reached out to us and was willing to do that. I think that's awesome. The next we have is Warren County Educational Service Center for thirteen-three, and that is also for their wellness center, special education. We have Cincinnati Occupational Therapy. That's at eighty-five dollars an hour. The hours will vary. These are all for this current school year, by the way. And that's also for special education services, I believe OT for that, occupational therapy. Special ed, transportation agreement with a parent not to exceed thirteen hundred dollars. That's to transport a child. And then we have two with the gifted healthcare education. That's the name of the company. They are both at six dollars an hour at thirty-five hours per week, and I believe those are both for therapists. And the last one is with Maxim Healthcare Services. That is at seventy dollars per hour, and that is for a nurse, I believe, also special education-related.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
And Bobby, if you don't mind, I'm going to mention something real quick, if you don't mind. From April eighth to the eleventh, I was in Columbus at the Ohio Association of School Board or School Business Officials for some professional development. And then actually, Mark made me think about something too and was at various PD and so on and was set through things as far as economic outlooks, serves and stirs, updates on the retirement system, forecasting, and so forth. But there was something we looked at and actually Mark hit on something, there's a CUP report, as I'm sure everybody's seen it, where you can look and see different things. And I was wondering about this, and I sat through some classes on EMIS and coding and so on. And I was just wondering how our coding looks compared to other districts because it always looks like we had more administrators. And lo and behold, being, trying to be as transparent as possible, I think we have some people that are miscoded and we're going to go back and look at it because we have some positions that look like they roll up as administrators on that report that actually are not administrators. So I'm going to go back, I'm going to dig into that and take a look at it. It was something that really, when Mark was mentioning that report, I thought, you know what, I got to talk about that real quick. But it's something I want to dig into here over the next few weeks and make sure our stuff's accurate. There's an EMIS manual that talks about position codes and so on, and you go down through it and obviously put people where they belong. But I've talked to various other districts, I've talked to the people putting on the professional development and so on, and I think we might have some people miscoded. So I got a feeling our numbers look a little inflated, and they don't need to be inflated if they're not accurate. So we're going to go back and take a look if they're correct. Best one to mention that real quick.
That's good. Thank you.
Sir Sousa was making me think about it on the.
Also, I know we congratulated you on your good audit, your wonderful audit.
Oh, thank you.
But also, I would like to thank your staff because they make you look good.
They do.
And we thank them also for all the good and hard work that they do.
Absolutely. I have a tremendous staff. We wouldn't have, you know, every clean audit since I've taken over is every audit's been clean. We all look at it as from the view as an auditor, a couple that were auditors with the state auditor's office, and we look at it, you're going to do it right, do it the first time. This pays off.
And it's a team effort, right?
Absolutely a team effort. No doubt about it.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Superintendent's reports and recommendations.
Yes, I asked for the board's approval for all items under personnel.
I need a motion.
I'll move.
Mrs. Horvath?
Second.
Mrs. Elmer? Discussion.
Yes, you will notice that Mr. Ryan Cherry is on this report as a resignation from his principal position. He's been our principal at the middle school for fourteen years and has decided to spend the remainder of his career back in the classroom. This is kind of a growing trend. I'm hearing more and more administrators spending their final years back in a classroom where they have direct access with our children, and Mr. Cherry has decided to do that as well.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I would like to just say again, in good conscience, I cannot vote yes knowing that some of these employees are going to be getting the pickup or the bonuses. I just don't think fiscally this district's in a position to do that as we're already talking about a renewal levy in the fall. So I will be. about a renewal levy in the fall, so I will be voting no. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? Roll call, please.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
No.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Thank you. I asked for the board's approval for the May summer athletic camps.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Wallace?
I'll second.
Elmer? Discussion?
Yes, these are our May athletic summer camps, we will also be, I'll be asking you to approve June and July athletic summer camps at a later meeting, and the coaches that are running these camps were just approved under the personnel, so this is kind of the second step. We have a lot of our youth that participate in our summer camps, it's really a great thing for our community.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I ask for the board's approval of the 2025 senior graduating class. This is pending that they meet all of their graduation requirements.
Second.
Elmer, Mr. Wallace, I understand there's 300...
99, so we have not hit 400 yet, but we are as close as we can possibly be, I think next year will be our first 400, but this year is 399 students. Our graduation ceremony will again be at the Nader Center on May 18th at 6 o'clock.
All right. Any comments? I'm just excited.
That's a lot of kids that we're getting through here.
That's a lot of students.
You'll be graduating, right, or will you?
Next year.
Next year, okay.
She's gonna have 400, right? I think so, yeah.
All right, I need a roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm sure our students thank you as well. Next, I ask for the board's approval of the two-year agreement with our Little Miami Teachers Association as attached.
So moved.
Mr. Wallace?
I'll second.
Horvath? Discussion?
Yes, we began negotiations with LMTA on January 16th, Mr. Like is here tonight, we collaborate, collaborated nicely with LMTA, and we've come to a final agreement, it has been ratified with our LMTA members, and here tonight for approval from the board.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I ask for Resolution 25007, the approval of the...
Can we not put those all together?
I don't think we can.
I do have a second.
Okay, all right, just wondering, all right. Need a motion for Resolution 25007.
I'll move.
Horvath, Mrs. Horvath?
Second.
Elmer? Discussion?
Yes, after completing the newspaper advertisement, the hearing, we are asking that Erica Burke be rehired as a middle school math teacher.
This also saves us some...
It absolutely saves us money, so what we do is, when a teacher rehires, so these folks are all at the top of our salary schedule, when they retire, they get to start collecting their retirement benefits, and then when we rehire them back, we hire, rehire them back at about step five, these will all be at step five. And so it is a significant savings for the district, they are getting their retirement and step five of a salary, so it's really a win-win.
And they're already familiar with the district, the building, the administrators, the students, the parents, as well as the subject matter, so...
And they're excellent staff members, or we would not be rehiring.
Right, we get their expertise, no...
Absolutely.
All right.
Are we putting into their retirement the pickups?
These are teachers.
Oh, teachers, you're right, okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
I ask for the board's approval of Resolution 25008.
Motion.
So moved.
Mr. Wallace?
I'll second.
Horvath? Discussion?
This is the exact same thing for Kevin Rose.
What does he teach?
Middle school math as well.
Math, okay, good.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
I ask for the board's approval for Resolution 25-009.
Motion.
So moved.
Mr. Wallace?
Second.
Mr. Seibert? Roll call.
What does, uh...
Madge teach, she is our, she's an ELA teacher by trade, and she is our middle school media center specialist currently.
I believe my daughter... Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
And the last resolution is 25010 that I asked for the board's approval.
Need a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Seibert? Discussion?
So this one is Chad Conkle, who is a staff member here at Central Office, would like to begin the process of the retiree hire, which means that tonight we will pass the resolution to put the ad in the paper to begin that advertisement. We will then have a hearing, and then we will then come back with another resolution to hire as we did tonight, so this is the approval of advertising in the newspaper. Yes.
Does, so he will, he's retired, and we're still paying his retirement.
So with Mr. Conkle, we will, he is currently at a step five, is that right, Chad? And he will move down to a step one, so we will be saving money with that, but we will, we do still, in past practice, is that we do still pay the pickup.
And we're paying 14% or 10%?
STRS is always 14% for us, and SERS is always 10%, he is an STRS.
And that'd be something, Mark, we can talk afterwards about the differences, because my understanding is, had he not been teacher previous and just came into his position without being a teacher in STRS, then he would come in as SERS. Correct?
Correct, if you are not a certified teacher, then typically you come in in an SERS retirement system.
Regardless if he uses it, we'll talk. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
That is all I have.
Thank you. On, next on our agenda, it's board meeting times, we did state that we would come back to this, someone has asked that maybe we start our meetings at 6 o'clock, or 6:30, and when we were talking about this before, we said we would revisit this, so how does the board feel about this? So let's start with you, Mr. Seibert.
Well, I'm okay with 7 o'clock, I am retired, but I'm flexible, if it is an emergency or we need to adjust the time, I'm okay with that, but I like standard times, over the years, it has always been seven, actually, it's in our bylaws.
Thank you.
I like the idea of moving it earlier, 6 o'clock or 6:30, I just think it gives more leeway with the end time of the meeting and dealing with jobs the next day and things like that, it's just, to me, it's more appealing.
Well, I'm flexible, so 6 o'clock's fine with me, 6:30, I think it's, I, at the crew center, we start at 6, and then we get out, especially in the winter, we get out a little, it's nicer to get out a little earlier, but I'm okay if we have to go back to 7.
I'm good with 7.
This might come as a shock, I'm okay with making it 5:30. I mean, my take on it is, to get it 5:30, we make it home for dinner. I think 7 o'clock's a little late, just because I don't wanna be rushed, as we have some good discussion, I think sometimes we get, we cut short our good discussions, the only concern I would have with making it too early is the awards for the young students, they seem to really enjoy it, maybe if we can behave ourselves, we can put the awards maybe later or something else, but I'm in favor of earlier the better, my only concern, again, like I say, the youngsters don't get off the bus, I think to what, like 4:15, 4:30?
I was gonna say, our buses, they run until 5 o'clock, about 5:05, so we would wanna make sure that our children are off the bus first.
Sure, so, you guys can think about it, I'm...
So we have 7, 6 or 6:30, I'm flexible either way, you're flexible either way, and you want...
Looks like it, yeah.
So it sounds like we're gonna start a little earlier.
It's fine, it's fine.
Let's try 6:30.
That's, yeah.
All right, from now on, we need a motion, don't we?
Do we, do we wanna start this right now, or do we wanna start it in the summer with the beginning of next year, and I'm just asking, does that make a difference?
Well, the, while the kids are still in school, let's start it, let's start it in June, how's that? Is that all right?
Fine with me.
Okay, so June starts at 6:30 and going forward, 6:30. Right.
And we might, yeah, we'll see how it goes, I mean, if we're not worried about buses and students, maybe we can try to make our summer months a little earlier, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I agree with that, summer months are different.
Yes.
Well, do we wanna talk about that, I mean, it's under meeting times, do we want June and July to be a different time? I mean, is that what I'm, I'm just asking, again, I don't, I don't have a preference, but now's probably the time to talk about it.
It is, it is, well...
Because you guys work till 5, or, okay, you're supposed to work till 5, no.
So let's, let's do June, let's think about June and July at 6.
I don't care, it's up to you guys.
Okay, like I said, I'm in favor of giving it a whirl at 5 or 5:30, the full timers ain't can just, so they don't have that two-hour gap where they're stuck at putters or something. What's that? Oh, hang on, oh, sorry.
Wait, 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 wait. Yeah. Sorry. Uh, that's true.
I mean, I'm in favor of giving it a shot for the summer, but...
All right, let's try 6 and...
So June and July is 6 o'clock?
And then, and then, and August, 6:30. Is that all right with all the board?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
All right, got it. All right, the next part is Board Policy Committee, and Mary's gonna help me with this.
While we've held our first three two-hour policy committee meetings, which actually have gone pretty quickly, I expected to be slogging through those two hours, but there's a lot of information to digest, as you can imagine. As many of you know, our committee is made up of Mrs. Grace and myself as board representatives, Regina Morgan, Terry Gonda, Pam Coats, Marla Timmerman, Jamie Miles, and Chad Conkle. Mark Barhorst, our Neola representative, has done a great job facilitating the meetings and keeping us moving at an efficient pace. We all have the same assigned pre-work to do individually before each meeting.
Yeah, we have homework.
So that we come ready to discuss. This involves reviewing a section of recommended Neola policies and speaking for myself, comparing with our current OSBA policies, and referencing Ohio Revised Code. Each member provides important insights and perspective from their roles in the district, and I feel we have collaborated well so far. On our agenda tonight, you'll see a first read of the first 52 policies, these are related to our board bylaws, and it's my understanding that Neola policies, we cannot do the full switch to Neola until all 600-plus policies have had a first read, so going forward at each meeting, we're gonna be adding each section to board agendas separately, and our next section will be involving administrative policies, so, and I guess as you review them, if you see policies that you think need further discussion, I think definitely we should schedule work sessions, maybe a couple, to, you know, get a couple of board meetings under our belt and...
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be really, really boring, but so far, it hasn't been so boring, so it's quite, it's quite interesting to hear administrators and board members to discuss, you know, this section or this section, and it really hasn't been that boring, so...
We're having so much fun, we're adding an hour to this.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, thank you so much for all of your hard work, 'cause I know, it's laborious reading, a lot of times you have to read, reread, I mean, I read things three and four times before I, it sinks in, but is now a time that we could ask for a clarification?
Sure, sure.
So the... Well, it's not on a specific one, it's on all of them, so the parts that are crossed out are things that are proposed by Neola that we are rejecting, or things that were on our previous bylaws that we are now rejecting?
Those were recommended by Neola that as a committee, it was decided that we, it didn't apply to our district.
Okay.
And it wasn't required by law.
Right, and some of them we've already, we already do.
Which are some redundant...
Yeah, I just wasn't sure, and I wanted to make sure.
I have a really good example of that, and a lot of them are options, so we can pick one option or the other, we can pick all of them, but, so for example, it talks about the president pro temp at the organizational meeting, did we want the president pro temp to stay the president of the board through the election of the president and the vice president, or just the president? So we crossed out the vice president, because we've always had the president pro temp elect the president, and then the president takes over right then and calls for the election of the vice president. So a lot of them will have options that, like, do you want it this way or do you want it this way? They both are fine, it's just what is the preference of the, of the district or the board? And, and so that's just an easy one, that we said we don't need it to, the president pro temp to elect the vice president, that the board president does that, and, and so it was just the way that we, that we did things here at Little Miami, and so we crossed out vice president.
Thank you.
Move, moving forward, how do we wanna do this, to identify certain policies that may have more discussion, as opposed to ones that we can just skip over? So that way, if, I mean, we can turn every meeting into a policy meeting, or as Mary mentioned, we can maybe put them in a bucket, so to speak, and then when we get a certain number, we can maybe then make a worthwhile work session.
For first reading, you should pull out the ones that you, you know, want to talk about, and then after we get so many, like you just said...
Okay.
Then we'll... What's the process, if a board member wants to pull one of those out, how do they communicate that?
Just send us an email.
Send you, send you, the board president, the email, okay. And I say that because I know these were put in, and I've looked through some of them, but I'll be honest, I've not made it through all of them, so I just didn't wanna miss my all of them. So, I just didn't want to miss my opportunity.
Something we might want to consider, since it's, it's pretty difficult to get all of our schedules together for a, a work session, it's probably easier to schedule one now, out a little bit, and then cancel it if we don't need it. But it will be there if we do need it for, to, to do a work session on board policies. I'm assuming as we go through, there's going to be some that we want to have more discussion over. And so, it just might be easier if we set that work session sooner than later.
I also think taking advantage of the summer months is a good idea, since it's right upon us, and we're right in the middle of this. It's always difficult, more difficult during the school year.
Right. And the last few months are so hectic, like May, and, and it's really bad. So...
Yeah, I, I have a few questions about all the policies in general, not any individual wording of any policy. And probably the first one is, how will these policies be disseminated throughout our district that affects all our students, faculty, and staff?
I'm sure we're gonna have a policy book, like we've always had. And they'll be on, I'm sure they're online.
I just want to make sure all have the opportunity to read and understand before we vote on those, okay?
Online.
All right. I have a couple more questions. How many of these policies are required by law?
Well, we just discussed those in a...
Yeah. We did, I can't give you a number right now.
Okay, I, I accept that. Now, the fifty-two, it's, there's, there's quite a few. Policies aren't free. Who's gonna do the training and who's gonna pay for it?
Well, I will say this. Most of those policies are so similar to what we already have, that I don't think there's gonna be a lot of training. If there's something that really needs training, we will see to that.
I know some of the training that's offered to all our faculty and staff is done online, which is very convenient. You just sign on, you complete the course, you get credit, and you get a certificate for it. That's very convenient. I've done some of that. But I just want to make sure...
Make sure we ask Neola to make, if we...
Record, record-keeping costs money. And it's important, because we have to keep it up to date. Who has been trained? When have they been trained? It doesn't last forever. So, yeah, um... I have some more questions, but I'm not gonna ask them right now. They may be very sensitive. Some of these policies could have been, or maybe in the future, challenged legally. I know Neola has said that they would represent us if any policy winds up in litigation. And I just need to ask, what is their success story in litigation?
That's a good question. When we meet on Thursday, we'll ask him.
Thank you. I'll, I'll accept those answers and yield my time. Thank you. Thank you for your time and your efforts on these policies. That's a lot of policies to go through.
It is. But you learn a lot. You, you do. You learn quite a bit. All right. Any other thing on that? Any questions about the committee? All right, going on. If you look at your list there, we have all the policies on first read. So, board members, you look through those and pull out the ones you want to discuss. Moving on. Warren County Career Center report. I do have one. Luke Foreman, a junior in the cyber technology program, captured the silver medal in information technology services competition at Skills USA, and will represent the school at the Skills USA National Competition in Atlanta, Georgia, on June twenty-third. The competition also saw teams from our graphics program claim a silver medal, silver medal in vinyl wrapping competition, and a bronze for their children's book design. I still haven't figured out what vinyl wrapping is yet. So, they're gonna show me, I, I think they've done it in Spring Grove somewhere. So, I'm not sure what that is. So, I'm gonna find out. Students in Mrs. Rogers Satellite Program in Waynesville High School competed in the regional competition for Flex Factor last week at Sinclair Community College. The Flex Factor competition resembles Shark Tank, where teams of students compete with the best business pitch. Juniors Abby Buck, Jackie Wright, and Lola Dubard took first place with their Neo, Neo Neurosock, Neuro Opera sock product, designed to help those dealing with neuropathy. A group of sophomores from Waynesville finished in fifth place, and their product that would tell you, their product will tell you if your refrigerator wasn't running at the proper temperature. Decker Atkins received the Warren County Career Center Franklin B. Walter Scholarship at the Warren County ESC. Decker is a senior in the Fire Science Program from Waynesville School. Warren County Career Center students recently competed at the HOSA State Competition in Toledo. Laney Anderson and Ansley Eureka placed in the top five, wait a minute, top five in dental terminology. Audrey Sawley placed eighth in the veterinary science competition. So, our kids go through all their training and all their classes, and then the best are pulled out, or they, they offer to compete. And they go into state competitions, and then they go into national competitions. So, we've got some really good up-and-coming stars there. And that's all I have.
I have one, yeah. I have a brief legislative report, something we all have in common. In roughly the next sixty days, the state legislature is gonna approve or reject our biannual budget. It has to be done by June thirty-first. It's my opinion, and from the information that I have received, six hundred million will go to the Cleveland Brown Stadium. Another five hundred million will go for private school vouchers. Public schools are gonna get about two hundred and fifty million. I would like to ask everyone to please be a representative. This is important stuff. The next sixty days, if you want your school to be funded, I would ask you to call your state representative or senator and be nice. Treat them with dignity and respect, okay? Manners will take you where brains and money won't. Thank you, Madam Chair. That includes my report.
Thank you.
Next board meeting date, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. And that'll be almost the end. Yes, seven o'clock. We don't start this, the six o'clock till June. All right, comments on non-agend items.
Silas Shelton. First, I think we ought to move the meeting till three thirty, so nobody can attend them, anybody that has a job. Number two, over to church, we ran into a little situation this week. Had a lady that was teaching all week long, two young boys, four and six. One of them hit the teacher, and the other one was punching the wall. And had to call the mother, the situation. Had Easter egg hunt Sunday. These two boys, their mother would not let them hunt Easter eggs. There was a result for the action. Something I've learned, evidently, I, I don't quite understand how the school works. My daughter called me, and you guys would be really implementing your, your phone ban. She called me from school crying. And y'all learned last month that my daughter was a target sexually assaulted here at school through some, some phone and so forth. Anyway, she called me crying. She found out that the boys that were in this are going on a DC trip. And she said, I thought there was a no-contact order. Well, a no-contact order only applies to ROTC. Only applies ROTC. It doesn't matter what goes on the rest of the day, just in that class. And she's like, the, the entire school's flipping off. Nobody, nobody cares. And I'm gonna tell you that I'm not standing up here for my daughter, okay? My daughter can defend herself. My daughter is an outstanding woman. My daughter is absolutely awesome. I am standing up here because of every other girl in this school. We're just, i- 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 it blows my mind what we have decided should be done, you know, wi- with this situation. I- i- it blows my mind. There's no regard for my daughter. And, and, and I, I, I don't get it. And everybody I talked to was mad about this. They're mad about it. They're mad with me. They're not mad at me. You know, I, I was told, hey, go, go contact the police. I don't have a problem with these boys. I understand that boys will be boys. I'm upset about it. What I'm upset about is the school, and the way the school handled this. There is no discipline here. There is none. We want to make things just go away. We want to neutralize it and be quiet about it, and just shove it under the rug and act like it didn't happen. And all we're doing is we're setting up other little girls to go through this stuff. I don't care if you get rid of the cell phones, and they don't, they don't even come into school. We've already laid out a platform to allow this type of thing to happen at Little Miami schools. I will continue to be vocal about this, and I hope that you would support me on that.
If I can, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda.
We have to vote on it.
That's what I'm asking right now. But we'll get back to public comments. I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda.
I need a motion and a second for amendment to the agenda.
Can I say what it's about?
Say what it's about first.
Thank you. I would like to go into executive session after this meeting with the board, the superintendent, and Mr. Shelton. I'd like to go into executive session to hear more about this situation, and I guess get a better understanding of what, what's happened, what's going on.
Okay, we have a first and a second. I need a roll call.
Mrs. Grace? Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Now, I need a motion to put it on the agenda.
I'll move. Mrs. Horvath? I'll second.
Mrs. Elmer? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace? Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. I stand before you today...
Wait, 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 wait. Please state your name and your address.
Uh, Mandy Lebavich. I live in the VOG neighborhood, Village on the Green. Good evening. I stand before you today because something deeply troubling is happening in our community, something that strikes at the heart of who we are as Americans. Right now, another Little Miami resident is being hit with a lawsuit for speaking up at a school board meeting. It's an assault on one of our most fundamental rights, the right to free speech. The First Amendment doesn't come with conditions. It doesn't say, you can speak freely, but only if your opinion is popular. It doesn't say, you have a voice, but only if you don't make someone uncomfortable. It says you have the right to speak, plain and simple. Public meetings, especially school board meetings, are meant to be platforms for us, the residents. When lawsuits are used to silence voices, to intimidate and bully residents into silence, we are no longer functioning as a free and open society. We are sliding towards something far more dangerous. Let me be clear. You don't have to agree with every opinion shared at the podium. That's not the point. The point is that everyone deserves the right to be heard without fear of retaliation. If we allow fear and legal threats to replace dialogue, we're not just silencing individuals. We're silencing democracy itself, and once we lose that, we lose everything. Thank you.
Ray Warwick, fifty-four, sixty-six, Grand Legacy Drive. I think the government's too big. Its taxes is too much. It wastes too much of our money. It's too intrusive with too many rules. That's what I believe. And, you know, I've been in, around quite a few school districts and local governments in the last ten, twelve years. In fact, I served in two local governments, and I always had the stance of, let's lower cost, let's cut taxes, let's, let's cut back on policy and rules. That's what I believed in, and that's what I would bring forth. Going into the industry of government and suggesting those things to people who live off of that stuff is kind of dangerous, I guess, because I was never, I was never given the privilege of having a discussion or a debate on the merits of that. I was just simply attacked and slandered and threatened. In fact, when I went and worked at a neighboring community, people who remembered me from this community actually reached out to the new bosses there and slandered me, said things that were absolutely untrue. I think that people like me, who want smaller government and less taxes and less spending, have something to offer, but I don't think it's in the game plan that we can offer it without being attacked. And so, if, there's two sides to the coin. And if the whole system is structured to push out the voices that want to cut the size of all this, and you guys are victims of it to a certain degree, 'cause I hear, oh, well, we have to do this, 'cause Ohio said so, or the Fed said so. Well, maybe let's dismantle the Department of Education in Washington, and hopefully they'll do a similar thing, if we ever get real leadership in Ohio, and take some of this burden off of a school district. But until we do that, the voices still have to be heard. And I'm always gonna speak out that we have to lower taxes. And I don't agree with all the, with everything that Mark said. Doesn't matter. I think there's other ways to approach this stuff. And if there was a forum to be able to do that, I think it would be worthy. Thanks.
Thank you.
No one else?
If I could just say, we cannot go into executive session because of rules unless we follow one of the guidelines, and it has to be stated prior to going into executive session. I do not have those guidelines in front of me. I'm trying not to be rude, but to look for them in the policies that we...
So, I think, just, we can just say we're, we're going in there to discuss a...
See, there's certain rules that you have to use, Dave. You can't, you can't just go into executive session for anything. It is another rule, Ray. You're right.
It's the fact that we're gonna be talking about a child and privacy. I know that's one of...
Hey, I'm sorry, but there is, and I'm on a board at the library, that we have to read that thing every time we go into executive session. We have to do that.
Let's find that thing.
She's finding it.
Well, I, I don't, I don't have my computer with me. It is the guidelines of executive session. Somebody wants to look it up.
The attorney's...
I'm looking it up. Thank you. Thank you, Diane.
Can we read these off? Or you got them, Diane?
Oh, you got it? Go ahead.
Yeah.
I hope this one's correct.
It should start with compensation of an employee.
Yeah, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion of employee. Obviously, it's not any of those. To consider the purchase of property for public purposes, sale of property, competitive bidding, and so on. It's not any of those. Conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending and intimate court action. Preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms. Matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes. That may, that may be the one. I assume maybe FERPA. I don't know. Details, relative security arrangements, emergency response protocols for public body or public office. And I believe that's...
All right, that's, I think that's... Just read them all, and we'll just say that... Yeah.
Talk a little everything.
We're going into exec...
If we get a FERPA violation to discuss a student on, on a, at a...
Matters to keep confidential by federal law or regulations of state.
So, I need a motion to go into executive session for, and what was that one? Say it again.
To discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
All right. I need a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Wallace?
Second.
Elmer? Roll call.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Probably it'll just be discussion. There'll be no action.
Yes, discussion only, no action. All right.
Thank you.
We are going into executive session.